Come this one?
Yeah.
Oh.
I just got in my car, it's about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles. My father Grant built into the ground every time.
Yes. Uh, I don't know.
Yes.
My father had a sixteen. I just showed you. We can get a seventy-five, we can get a five. Well, we're in Chicago. We're running in the sixty section.
Okay.
Eight record trailers, they say for me. That car had three hundred and fifty-five thousand. When he drove it on the way back from New York to the front of the car. And I said, God, he just kind of. You know what I just read the other day? The hundred and forty.
Yeah.
There's a hundred and forty-three. Thirty-one.
Oh, shit.
Especially when like, oh, Mary Joyce, I'm going for that. Mary Jordan has one, Colin has one, they're both. I don't like getting down that.
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order.
Augur Bright, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
And, uh, just so everyone knows, and please, uh, ask, act respectful tonight. Uh, Terry Udis' son passed away, he will not be here. Um, so. Amy?
Augur Bright?
Here.
Colinin?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Revara?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments on agenda items only.
I'll try to remember to turn it off so it don't feedback. I was kind of fired up about, uh, ordinance on electric construction permits being, uh, number sixteen that was ready to be approved two weeks ago. The six that Jason's been waiting for all year came forward, um, and failed for lack of second. And that and the number. I do want to ask, since it's not here, I do believe it's being kind of rewritten a little bit, but it's not going to end up in number thirteen, is it? Re- revising municipal code regarding building permits? Cause it could be smushed into one, I suppose.
No.
Okay, I had to ask that question. Um, I'd like yous all to play nice tonight and work as a team. This body, I, I, I've talked till I'm blue in the face about the dog park. I'd like to see one in downtown central, but I, 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 uh, think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Want to get the mic, Greg? Thanks.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approve bills in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents as presented for payment.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approve proclamation declaring the week of April nineteenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation declaring the week of April ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Number eight is, uh, approve lane striping quotes from Universal Asphalt and Investigating, Excavating, uh, bid one is, uh, Walnut Street East, uh, is for ninety-eight hundred dollars. And bid two is Walnut Street West, uh, eleven-nine.
Yep, east is, uh, from, uh, basically the four corners to the, uh, thirty-nine, and then the, the other one is, uh, basically thirty-nine all the way out to Orlando, Smith, Malik Road, and to the, basically, uh, two fifty-one. Anybody have any questions on that? It's, it's the same item that's on here from last time. I'll make a motion to approve lane striping quote from Universal Asphalt and Excavating, bid one of ninety-eight hundred dollars and bid two of eleven hundred, sorry, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next is, uh, approve selling two thousand four F-six-hundred diesel model AT-three-seven-G, small electric department bucket truck for th- uh, thirty-five hundred dollars.
This is the one that has all the hoses that are pretty much bad throughout it.
So we've always went out to bid for our surplus and now we're gonna, I don't know who's getting it, but probably they know one of you two pretty well, have had a guess, but, um, why aren't we going out to bid like we always have?
So, I, I talked.
It's all transparency, all that kind of stuff, so that's why.
Certainly.
Love to get the answer.
Yep, that's a good question. So I asked the, uh, attorney if, if this was a legal way for us to dispose of the vehicle, because the last time we did the public bid on a truck, I think the only bid that came in was like three hundred dollars, and it was almost worthless for that. So this one, though, is going to somebody, it's basically, it's our electric inspector that was interested in purchasing. So he works for the city already, I think he does a lot of good work, so to me, this is a piece of equipment that can go to, uh, useful cause. The thing only books for around three thousand to four thousand, so I thought thirty-five hundred was a fair deal on it, and I wanted to check, uh, with the city attorney to make sure that that was a legal way to dispose of equipment.
That doesn't mean it's ethical, though, but as long as it's legal, we'll do it here.
Well, if you wanna, I mean, if you, if you think it's important enough, we could go out to bid for it.
I think we should go out to bid for it, and I've had multiple citizens ask why we aren't going out to bid.
It's not always been that way, but if you want, if that's what the council feels, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, let's go out to bid.
All right, we can table it, or could, do we need to, can we change that motion to, to go out to bid right now, or do we need to put that back on the agenda?
It's just approved selling, and so if you want to sell it via bid, you can make that one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go out to bid for selling the two thousand Ford F-six-hundred diesel model AT-three-seven-G small electric bucket truck.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin? Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Place on file bids for fire hydrant replacement. Uh, Illinois Valley, uh, Excavating Incorporated was the low bidder for a hundred and seventy-five, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
There's also a plethora of, uh, that was the base bid, the alternate bid also goes up to two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve. That is actually to get all twelve remaining, uh, ones, you know, fully functional. Plus, it does add a couple other things in there with, like, getting a couple line stops to be able to install the ones on, uh, Columbia Avenue. But either way, I, I do think we should get all the bids, and the maximum bid for everything was, um, there was one that came in for three hundred and forty-four thousand.
But we get a hundred and thirty thousand from the grant.
Correct, a hundred and thirty thousand is what's finally coming through on that, that is correct.
Is that our original amount?
Hundred and thirty?
Yeah. It didn't go out, I don't know.
The grant didn't go out, we just finally got it three years later.
Okay.
So we were kind of expecting, I think the actual engineering estimate was, correct? Was it two twenty, yeah, two twenty-four was the engineering estimate. So if we would have probably got this in four years ago, it might have only cost a hundred and thirty thousand, but it did go up about ninety thousand over the last four years, unfortunately, so. But either way, since we're not approving tonight, it's just placing on file. Any questions, concerns over that? I'll make a motion to place all the fire hydrant bids on file.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Okay, uh, eleven is approved, one-two-one-two, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section one-four dot zero-six dot one-two-zero of the city's municipal code regarding fencing.
This is the, uh, this and the next two items after that are the items that came from the planning commission that they, uh, recommended for our approval. Does anybody have any questions on the fencing one?
So would they have to get a survey for this, just to be able to show where the property lines at?
No, that's.
Well, so how are they gonna?
Probably they should, well, often you can identify pins at the corners.
The one you're talking about, I think, is number twelve, the next one.
Oh, okay.
That's where they have to start putting the, uh, it on the diagram, on the actual, uh, they have to mark it. There's two things in the next one, is my understanding. They have to mark it on the ground prior to the inspector being there, and sidewalks have to be included now on the building permit process. That's the next one, though.
Doesn't this then also, uh, it's something to do with the fencing on?
Side yards.
For people that have, uh, corner lots or side yards, there was, yeah, there was some conflict.
That was suggested by Jim to try and clean up that section.
Okay.
Basically, in the, the current ordinance, the way it's written is if you want to, if you have a corner lot, the only authorized fence you can essentially have is like a white picket fence that can be see-through. So, there's no other questions? I'll make a motion to approve one-two-one-two-dash-zero-four-three, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section fourteen dot zero-six dot one-two-zero of the city's municipal code regarding fencing.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Number twelve is, uh, approve one-two-one-three, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section one-four dot one-one dot one-nine of the city municipal code regarding building permits.
This is the one that requires that, um, before a fence goes in, when the building inspector comes out, that it's marked somehow on the ground, and that sidewalks will be added to the building permit, uh, process. On the sketch anyways.
It catches both ways, the, the print has to match what he approves.
Correct.
What are the ramifications if they don't follow this? Is there new ones, or is?
No, no new ones, there's a penalty provision in the ordinance, but you haven't had them required since before.
Okay.
The problem was, there was some, there's been at least a couple incidents where you could make an argument that neither one did something wrong, because it was, it was very confusing. The, the, the way it was only written on the, uh, on the building permit, it, there was, there was numbers in there that indicated where the distance was from. One person read that as distance from the, uh, what is it, the right-of-way, and another one read it as distance from the road. It doesn't specify which one, so who's really at fault? But there, if we would have had a marking on there at the time when they, they go, they'd say, no, this is not the right marking location, it has to be this distance instead.
Okay.
The markings has to, has to coincide with the print.
Correct. There's no other questions? I'll make a motion to approve one-two-one-three-dash-zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section fourteen dot eleven dot nineteen of the city's municipal code regarding building permits.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin? Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Fourteen is approved, one-two-one-five, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance regulating the installation, uh.
No, we're on thirteen.
Thirteen.
We're on thirteen, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it down ahead of time. Uh, approve one-two-one-four, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section fourteen dash eleven dash twenty of the city municipal code regarding letters of occupants.
This has to do with, um, correct me if I have this wrong. This is where, uh, if, if somebody gets a letter, wants to get a letter of occupancy because the house is finished and they're doing it in the winter months, to where they can't finish all the required items, this will allow us to collect.
Set up an escrow.
Set up an escrow to basically issue them that letter of occupancy.
Remember, we talked about this time?
Yeah, no, I know this one.
Yeah.
Okay, do they have any questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve one-two-one-four-dash-zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance revising section fourteen dash eleven dash twenty of the city's municipal code regarding letters of occupancy.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next one is approved, one-two-one-five, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance regulating the installation of stationary electric generators in the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
This essentially just creates the, uh, requirement that they get an electrical inspection if somebody were to put a generator in. Right now, there isn't a, a legal requirement to force that, and the whole reason behind it is not saying that ones are installed unsafely right now, but it's to prevent that in the future to make sure they have the proper disconnect switch in there.
I think what, what prompted this, this ordinance or take the action, we had a, uh, somebody install one, uh, and it didn't have a double throw switch.
And so this isn't from the derecho? Cause that, okay, that's what I was, the last time we talked about that's two thousand twenty.
So this, it, it, the whole issue actually started becoming aware of it, actually from the derecho. It actually wasn't in the city of Oglesby, it was one of the other nearby municipalities that had, somebody had one in their basement, and they had a snorkel on it to the outside, and the electrical, people when they're going around repairing, reconnecting houses, found it by accident. So it wasn't even in the city of Oglesby, but it just brought up the whole awareness of it that we didn't have a means to, to inspect these.
And so what does the permit cost or inspection cost?
It's the, I don't know, that, that didn't change, it's the same, still the same cost, whatever, seventy-five?
Okay.
Whatever the same cost is to have it, just requires it to be ha- to have. All right, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve one-two-one-five-dash-zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance regulating the installation of stationary electrical generators in the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approve ordinance one-two-one-seven, zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance establishing a test program for the installation of sewer check valves in the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
This is from the item that we talked about, uh, previously. It actually came from originally in the, uh, LaSalle, the city of LaSalle's engineers are the one that recommended it. They had, we, it's almost the exact same language as them, we just reduced the total, uh, benefit amount from ten thousand, I think, to four thousand. Now, the question. Correct, because we don't know if we want to continue doing it, do we need to do more? But if that does come up, the council could always, you know, authorize more if that was important or not. Anybody have any questions or concerns over this?
It's gonna help two people, so that's why I'm gonna be against it, tell you the truth.
Cause it's gonna help two people, you say?
Yeah, four thousand dollars is not that much, and it'll take us forever to get everyone caught up, so then how do you pick who gets it? There's probably some calculation or anything, but either way, it does not help a majority.
It's a first come, first served thing.
Yeah.
Uh, there's actually, I think there's at least two homes I know of that actually had damage that they, they responded to. So it does put a time limit on it, I think you have to, had damage within the previous two years and, and evidence of the damage. Now, it's not that it just gives it to two people, because some of them could be cheap to put in. Um, like I talked to an individual today that had his put in, I didn't tell me when he put it in, though. Uh, but his cost two thousand dollars, I'm told the range can be anywhere from, what, twenty-four hundred to four thousand, something like that roughly? So if it was at the higher end, yeah, it would only suffice two people. That's the only ones that reached out to me that had specific damage from sanitary things.
Jason, isn't this, it's, this caused by the people, and I don't know how the hell they get it flushed down the toilet, but, uh, towels and everything else?
So this is where I was talking about that moral issue. The people that flush towels or, or diapers and stuff like that, they're not necessarily causing damage to their own home. They're causing damage somewhere else to somebody else down the line, is the problem with that.
That, that's when it goes to the lift station?
Correct.
And, and gets clogged up and, and we, we don't move it on from there.
Correct, we've taken actions, for example, that we've put a generator in, there's one lift station that's kind of vulnerable in the city. It's the, the West Walnut Lift Station, there's been a lot of expansion around it, so I don't know if it's, if it, if it can't necessarily handle the load or something like that, but like, for example, if we go out without power for a certain period of time, that one has chance of, of causing an issue. So we put a generator out there, so we've solved the electric concern for that. But then if, if so much debris goes through there or something like that, it can, it can actually seize up both pumps. So we're looking at different options, if we're gonna get grinder pumps or, which is obviously a much larger cost, we got a new dialer system coming in that's gonna get installed tomorrow, but I mean, all of these are, are not perfect solutions yet for everything. So this is just one other way that, that we can try to help residents if they have a identified issue.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions on it? I think it's a good benefit to give residents, so I'll, I'll make the motion to approve one-two-one-seven-dash-zero-four-zero-three-two-three, ordinance establishing a test program for the installation of sewer check valves in the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Augur Bright?
Okay, it was the second, they need a second here?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. No second?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Died as a lap of a second. Okay, uh, this next one, uh, and before I read it, I want to go down, uh, there's two of them here. Um, one is for sewer separation on Clark Street, and the other is the, uh, is the tanker truck. Jason carried the water for us on the, on the sewer separation. Uh, Marty Turk, Turks Lake, uh, from, uh, helped us with the, uh, with the tanker truck. Uh, board members, uh, Dave Torres, Mike Cassup, and Brian Dose, uh, really helped us with the county board to get these. So number sixteen, I'll, I'll read this, this is to approve zero-four-zero-three-two-three-R, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Oglesby to execute an ARP, subscribed agreement by and between LaSalle County, Illinois and the city of Oglesby for the city sewer separation project.
Also, it's, uh, it's valued at two hundred thousand, so they decided to pay for it. So any questions on that?
Where's, where's that?
Clark. It's, uh, there's two, there, remember, if you remember, there's two major sections of the city that still needed sewer separation. One was Clark, and the other was on the North Columbia side. The North Columbia side, we were trying to get as a small component of that large rebuild Illinois grant that we were denied. So Clark is still the largest section, though. So we basically have, we are required to have it done by June of twenty twenty-seven, so we thought this would be a great project for the county to want to help with, because the sooner they give us funding for it, hey, the sooner we solve some stuff that goes in the river.
This is COVID money, right?
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, it won't cover the entire cost, but it's two hundred thousand for it, so. All right, I'll make a motion to approve zero-four-zero-three-two-three-R, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Oglesby to execute an ARPA subrecipient agreement by and between LaSalle County, Illinois and the city of Oglesby for the city sewer separation project.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin? Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next is approved, zero-four-zero-three-two-three-R-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Oglesby to execute an ARP, uh, subrecipient agreement between, uh, LaSalle County, Illinois and the city of LaSalle for the city's fire department, uh, tender truck. And basically, that other one was, I don't know how, thirty years old, uh, I don't want to see our firemen out there at the end of a hose and no water coming.
Two additional things with this one, this one's also valued at two hundred thousand dollars. Oh, and also, I'd like to thank, uh, Chief Paparella, he was one of them that was present to help give the, uh, presentation at the, uh, finance committee. Any other questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve zero-four-zero-three-two-three-R-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Oglesby to execute an ARPA subrecipient agreement by and between LaSalle County, Illinois and the city of Oglesby for the city's fire department tender truck.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Place on file ordinance one-two-one-eight, dash, zero-four, two-zero-two-three, approving the authorization of the execution of redevelopment agreement between the city of Oglesby and Rita Artega, uh, DBA, Mr. Salsas. That was for the sign.
The sack reimbursement.
All right, any questions on? All right, I'll make a motion to place on file ordinance one-two-one-eight, zero-four-two-zero-two-three, approving and authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement between the city of Oglesby and Rita Artega, doing business as Mr. Salsas.
Second.
Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colinin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Hold business. Having none, I'll move on. Public comments? Come up to the podium, Drew.
Those of us with a conscience don't want to be here, and I, and I, I don't think it's, it's right. And it, it says more about you than it says about us, because the ones that don't want to be here are stomachaches. And it's just unbelievable. And I got one quick story I want to leave you with, because every time I hear somebody say they were in service, I think my friend Harry LaPaola, Harry LaPaola was from the state of Washington. He moved here with his family and his, with his wife, daughter, and two sons. Well, you got to know Harry, and, uh, Harry was one of the first UDT trogmen, and his job in Vietnam was, he had to go and get desserts, and he was good at it. And you know what? His whole life, I've never heard him say one thing about his sister. And e- every time I hear somebody like you, it's maybe a recruiter, or dry dock, or whatever, that makes me sick. And guys like Harry, that's a slap on the face for that, and that's all I need to say.
Test. Okay, um, Greg, Greg's saying, Oglesby.
Thank you.
First off, um, the, you, the sewer check valves that failed for a second tonight, when it says establishing a test program, is that the corporation test? Or is it the word, uh, a verb, test? We have a.
Like test incorporated, like test of verb.
You're not approving you to do the work. Okay, and, so, the, um, the last meeting, it was mentioned that, uh, uh, blue jeans were getting into the grinder, and is the sewer separated out in that neck of the woods for the, the curb gutter and the sanitary sewer? Is it?
It is.
Is, is it been separated?
It is.
So it's not something going down the gutters in the street? Okay, and I wanted to read this for this crowd here, that, that number sixteen that was, been sent back to committee for rewriting, and it's, uh, last week it was twelve sixteen, and now it's the. It's not on the list, but this is public comments on anything now, okay? And so permit required for electric construction permit procedure and regulations. No person, firm, or corporation shall do or cause to be done any interior or exterior electrical wiring or any electrical construction, electrical installation, or alteration of any electrical wiring, apparatus, or fixtures within the city. Permits shall not be required, I wanted to, this is kind of a, a, a takeaway from that very strongly worded, uh, people can't do their own work anymore, uh, and in this twenty-first century going on to the twenty-second century, in a building full of a hundred-year-plus-old building. century, in a building full of a hundred-year-plus-old buildings. Permit shall not be required for maintenance work, for repair work, if the maintenance and the repair work does not require alteration or rearrangement of any existing electrical instruction. Now, that's one page of about ten, and seemed to be the, the meat of it, of the heavy-handedness of this, another ordinance that makes our old buildings more difficult to bring up from the days of sixty amp service with screw and fuses. I get it. I don't want the, a block to burn down like it's happening all over the place, but things like this can have consequences that, you know, and I don't want to see that happen.
Is your question why it's not back on the agenda?
No, I know why it's, it, cause I complained to two commissioners that I thought this was a little heavy-handed, and maybe you listened to me for once.
Greg.
Greg, the, the part of this, the, the Generac thing, it's, uh, can I say this?
The generator thing?
The Generac thing.
This was, this, the way it's written, a, a guy can't pull a, uh, a, a wire out of his electrical panel and jump it over to another circuit, cause he's, he's, he's got a new appliance in, in the building that's running a little heavy on twenty-amp cir-
Circuit. I, I don't.
You don't think it goes that far?
So, well, the, the thing about the Generac, and, and the most important thing, if you don't hook it up right, it can feed back on the people out there that are working on the lines.
This is-
And it's killed people.
Number sixteen, which was pulled from this week's approval-
He's talking about the-
Is, is, is the electrical ordinance, if any changes to the electricity in the building. And frankly, uh, the communication cables, I think was in one of the pages, but, uh, TV cable, telephone wires, uh, internet cables, I'm not sure you, you pulled that out of this ordinance.
So, so Greg, I appreciate your comments. The reason it's not on the agenda is because we wanted to take another look at it, and it's to the electrical inspector to review some of the stuff. The line that you read, to my understanding, was already in there. That's not one of the ones that's changing. What is looking to be, considered to be changed? The, the problem is, right now, if somebody builds like a new addition on their home or a business, and it doesn't affect, it doesn't change existing service to them, it's not required to be inspected. So that was what that was supposed to address, right? So the inspector is looking at it to make some more recommendations on it, so we can clean it up to be a little bit better. The part you read, is my understanding, that was already in there. That's not being touched.
All right. Well, I, at my age, I'm starting to get woke, and, uh, I'm, I'm worried about the, the ramifications of all this stuff, if you follow everything to the letter of the law.
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner reports. Augur Bright.
I have no comment tonight.
Cullen.
Okay. I got a couple here. Um, the tree and stone, stone program is now open. If you're interested in having a tree or a stone in one of the parks, please contact the Parks Department at eight-one-five-eight-eight-three-eight-one-twenty-one. Uh, the mayor's baseball and softball parade is Saturday, May sixth, at ten a.m. The ceremony will take place in Memorial Park. Uh, next, I have the summer recreation signups will be available this week or next. Uh, the school will be sending out an email to parents on how to access the link. We will also post on the city's Facebook page and Parks Department Facebook page. If you have any questions, please call eight-one-five-eight-eight-three-eight-one-twenty-one. And on behalf of, uh, the meeting we had last week, on behalf of the park board, I'd just like to, I, I wrote a little apology letter that I'd like to read to the people, and, uh, kind of let them know where I stand with this, if you don't mind. Okay. Okay, I'd like to apologize to the park board. Uh, we had a meeting Thursday over the potential dog park. They, they were against moving forward because of how close we are to an election, five days. I didn't see it that way at first, but the more I thought about it, the more I got what they were saying. I shouldn't have allowed myself to be baited by two current council members into holding a meeting over this issue. Uh, I just ba- basically wanted to get it done. It's been in the works since twenty twenty, and we first discussed it, but it's been slowed down by the mayor back then, who opposed it since the beginning. Uh, then in twenty twenty, the mayor was concerned about the location. Then in twenty twenty-two, uh, made a comment that it was gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars. Okay. So then they wanted a park board meeting. It just seems like they keep shifting the goalpost. Um, and because of this, I just wanted to spend the money without the Parks Board or Council approval. We have the power to do this up to twenty thousand dollars. However, when I got the letter from the mayor telling me I couldn't, even though the mayor had spent thousands of dollars on tax dollars, on improvements to Seneca Square and Lehigh Park without approval from the park board or council, this was a major complaint on the park board meeting that Thursday night. And there has been bigger issues to address with the city. I think the dogs of Oglesby are more entitled to a park than the IBEW is to a golf outing on taxpayers' money. But we all have, all seen in the last four years, pretty much the mayor can do what he wants to do. Hopefully, the next mayor, whoever it is, will have more respect for our commissioned form of government. And speaking on the next council, our time is about up here, but this is our last full regular meeting, and I want to thank the people of Oglesby for electing me in twenty nineteen. You know, it's been an honor serving you, and I also want to encourage you to, all to vote tomorrow, no matter who you vote for. And that's all I have for tonight. I'm done.
Jason.
I, we're doing political speeches. I should have been more prepared.
It's an apology.
It's okay. Um, a couple things-
This is a first, Jason.
Yeah. Uh, street, uh, the streets, okay. Uh, because of the, the fair weather we've had, uh, street sweeping has already actually started. Uh, gravel restart, uh, gravel refreshes will start next week with alleys, uh, along with pothole repair. Uh, hydrant flushing will start on the tenth. Uh, tomorrow, we're scheduled to get the new dialer system in for the West Walnut Lift Station. Hopefully, it's gonna be installed tomorrow as well. And a couple good things to put out here with, uh, electric. You know, we, we didn't know what this, uh, storm was all gonna entail. You know, we were kind of expecting derecho two-point-oh, so we kind of had all of our, uh, ducks in a row and, and ready to respond. Uh, you know, we were fortunate that, that most of the storm missed us. Uh, we were able to keep the lights on, but, uh, and Peru, um, actually requested mutual aid help, and I, I was actually very happy about that, just because they have given us so much support, uh, in the past for things. It was nice to be able to, to, to be asked. Also, we, uh, sent up, uh, IMEA mutual aid. We sent up to Batavia. Um, we sent a truck and, and some of our people up there. The response I got, and the pictures I got sent back, uh, was that Batavia ended up looking a little bit like our area did for our derecho. A lot of damage up there. So we were very fortunate that the, uh, that the storm kind of, uh, missed us, and that's about all I got. Have a great one.
I've only got, uh, just one thing tonight, is that the governor, uh, has signed an extension of the, uh, statewide, uh, disaster proclamation through April twenty-ninth, and, um-
Because of COVID, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm gonna take the high road. I'm not gonna comment. I think the people of Oglesby has heard enough garbage. Shall entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augur Bright.
Aye.
Cullen.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.